Good evening again, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. Our first item and I'll turn it over to clerk.
Through your worship, item two is declarations of community interest and the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is orders of the day and item 3.1 is correspondence regarding the 2021-2022 gas tax program letter of agreement. And there is a motion that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to enter into and execute a letter of agreement dated January 21st, 2022, with Her Majesty the Queen in right of the province of Ontario as represented by the Minister of Transportation for the funding under the dedicated gas tax funds for public transportation program for the 2021-2022 program term, and that the Director of Corporate Services/Treasurer or their respective delegate be authorized to execute all necessary letter of agreements and contract documents between the Corporation of the City of Stratford and Her Majesty the Queen in right of the province of Ontario as represented by the Minister of Transportation with respect to participation in future years of the dedicated gas tax funds for public transportation program.
By Council Ritzman, second by Council Razzalakos. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Post any, let's carry it.
Item number four is adjournment to a public meeting under the Planning Act. And there is a motion that the council, the special council meeting adjourned to a public meeting under the Planning Act to hear from members of the public with respect to the following planning matters. Draft Plan of Subdivision 31T21-003 and zoning bylaw amendment application Z13-21, 3025, line 34. The second being zone change application Z15-21 at 555 Downing Street. And the third being zoning bylaw amendment application Z16-21 at 4192 Short Street.
Thank you. Motion by Council Ingram and second by Council Burbak. That we adjourn for the purposes of conducting the public meetings is listed by the clerk. All those in favor? Opposed any? Let's carry it. I'll call this public meeting to order and the purpose of this meeting is to give counsel in the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to draft plan of subdivision 31T21-003 and zone change application Z13-24. The application affects the property with municipal address of 3025, line 34 in the city of Stratford. The order procedure for this meeting is as follows. Staff will present the application. The applicant or their agent will then make a presentation. Counsel may ask questions for the purpose of clarifying the application but are cautioned not to make comments or take a position on this application in public meeting. Registered delegations be asked for their presentations, comments, and questions. Questions and comments from the Q and A will be read into the record by the clerk's office staff member. Public is advised that if a person has not provided counsel with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions before a bylaws adopted or a decision is made, the Ontario Land Tribunal has the power to dismiss an appeal. The public is also advised that matters expressed, or sorry, comments expressed and written material presented are matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to this order procedure? Seeing none, we'll now proceed with the meeting. And we'll hear from staff with respect to the application. And this evening, we're joined by Alyssa Bridge, manager of planning. Ms. Bridge, welcome.
Through your worship, good evening. Oh, through your worship to the clerk, I'm just having difficulty with the screen share. I don't think I have access rights to do that.
And you should have it momentarily. There you are.
Perfect, thank you. So tonight's first public meeting is for a draft plan of subdivision application in a zoning bylaw amendment for 3025, line 34. So the subject lands are located to the south of line 34 and to the north of the CN rail line. They have an area of approximately 21.5 hectares and they are currently vacant. Next slide, please. The applicant has proposed a draft plan of subdivision for these lands. And the draft plan of subdivision is proposed to accommodate 452 new residential units. The subdivision includes an industrial block, two stormwater management blocks, a park block, two live-work townhouse blocks, six cluster townhouse blocks, 54 single detached dwelling lots, 52 street townhouse blocks. And all of this is proposed to be serviced by six new local roads and the extension of Duro Street. Next slide, please. The applicant is also proposing to rezone the subject lands from agriculture in the township of Perth East zoning bylaw and general industrial in the city of Stratford zoning bylaw to a general industrial special zone, a residential second zone to permit the single detached dwellings, two residential fourth density special zones to permit the variety of townhouse dwellings proposed, and a mixed-use residential special zone. Next slide, please. The land use designations on the subject lands were established through official plan amendment number 26 that was approved by the local planning appeal tribunal in 2019. The lands are currently designated residential area, medium density residential, gateway mixed-use area, and industrial. Through this amendment or the official plan amendment number 26, the Stratford East secondary plan was established and that is the guiding framework in the official plan for the development of these lands. Next slide, please. As previously mentioned, the lands are currently dual zoned with a portion of them zoned agriculture in the township of Perth East zoning bylaw and the other portion zone general industrial in the city of Stratford zoning bylaw. Next slide, please. The application was circulated on November 30th, 2021. And it was also published in the Town Crier on January 8th of this year. The agency comments received to date are outlined in detail in the staff report. And the public comments received to date have expressed concern with traffic impacts, compatibility with adjacent agricultural operations, and compatibility with adjacent industrial operations. Next slide, please. That is all I have for you formally this evening. I'd be pleased to take any questions that counsel has at this time.
Council Henderson.
The purple section on there, I was trying to figure out how wide that was. I figured it was 360 meters wide. Is that approximately right? Like I was just doing a calculation on the computer. You know, it's what, 3.6 hectares? So. I wanted to know how wide it was.
Through your worship, Counsel Henderson, are you referring to the residential portion of the subdivision or the?
No, that is definitely that purple section.
Oh, the industrial, my understanding is, are you looking for the size or the distance?
The distance from the property because, because of the, the odors from the factory. When I went on and was reading the different reports, you know, they specified how far away it had to be.
Through your worship, thanks for clarifying. My understanding is that the residential portions of this subdivision are located approximately 200 meters from the Cooper Standard factory.
Only 200? Because I thought it was, so 3.6 hectares, how wide is that?
Through your worship, I don't have the dimensions of that industrial block at my fingertips today, but certainly land use compatibility is going to be an important discussion on this proposed draft plan of subdivision and something that'll be outlined and discussed in detail in a future staff report.
I thought the minimum, because of, I think they're considered class two with 300 meters. And that would be well, way too close. Because I mean, if they can smell odors at the mall, you know, we're going to end up a lot of, with a lot of complaints from the residents, especially since we have westerly winds.
Through your worship, so my understanding is that the applicant and the agent are also participating this evening and they may be able to speak to this in a little bit more detail. But my understanding is that they've retained a consultant to do some detailed land use compatibility work to also look at potential odor impacts on the proposed subdivision.
Okay, so Counsel Henderson, could we wait until we have their presentation and we can ask a consultant? Sure, the consultants noted your comments on that. Is there any other questions from members of council at this time? Okay, seeing none, to represent the applicant this evening is Steve Close, the planner for the applicant. So I'll turn it over now to Mr. Close.
Thank you, worship and members of council. Can everyone hear me? Could I, through, through your worship, could I have the slideshow pulled up that I provided?
The clerk will do that.
Through your worship, actually, I can actually answer that question while we wait. My understanding is that it's a class two facility. Now, we haven't confirmed that yet through our own studies. Class two facility has a separation distance of 70 meters and an area of influence of 300 meters. So 300 meters is the area where studies have to be conducted, but not necessarily a separation distance. So it'd introduce myself. I'm Steve Close from Glenn Stein Associates. I'm a planner. I'm here today on behalf of Cachey Developments. I'm with me are Marcus Gagliardi from Cachey, as well as Hemisch Corporate Hanes and Lucas Arnold from Dylan Consulting. And we're here to discuss the aforementioned applications. So the property is located in the eastern border of Stratford. The nearby lands along Ontario streets are primarily commercial. To the west are some employment lands included the previously mentioned Cooper Standard facility. And to the south of the CN Rail where are existing agricultural lands outside the city of Stratford. Next slide, please. So the proposal consists of two applications, one draft plan of subdivision and one zoning bylaw amendments. Now, no amendment is required to the official plan to facilitate the developments. The proposed land uses are primarily residential, while with some commercial and industrial uses. Next slide, please. So here's the draft plan of subdivision, which you've already seen. You can see that the street townhouses in orange are the most prominent type of housing. Single detached lots in yellow are concentrated in two areas. The rear lane townhouses shown in light brown are in the northern part of the property. And the live-work townhouses shown as dark brown are at the far north fronting onto Ontario streets. And these will have commercial units on the ground floor and the intent is that this will complete the commercial street frontage along Ontario streets. So two stormwater management ponds are shown in blue. The green park block in the center, it has an area of nearly two acres. And this will be a public park, which will be accessible to all residents via the pedestrian sidewalk network. Finally, the industrial block shown in purple on the western side of the property has an area of just under nine acres. And that can confirm it is approximately 200 meters in width from, from the, the road allowance of CH Meyer Boulevard. So no development applications have been submitted for the industrial park at this time. These will be submitted in the future and all industrial uses are subject to site plan control, which gives the city oversight over the design of the block. Now, the layout of the, of the subdivision has been arranged to efficiently use land while taking into account the irregular shape of the property. Now, you notice that the, the share of residential units is tilted towards townhouses. This will help diversify Stratford's housing mix since the existing neighborhoods do have a higher percentage of detached homes. And as Ms. Bridge alluded to, there's three access points proposed. One to the west, intersecting with Duro and CH Meyer. One to the north, interacting with Ontario streets. And this is currently under review by MTO. And finally, one to the east, which is planned to be extended through the existing hydrolands to Perth Road 111 in the future. Next slide, please. So here are some elevations of the proposed homes. These are conceptual, so they may be redesigned, but they're being presented to give you a visual of what's the subdivision will eventually look like. So these are the two-story detached units with two car garages. Next slide, please. These are concepts for the two-story street townhomes with one car garages. Next slide, please. So here are concepts for the three-story rear lane townhomes. So these units have the required access via rear lane garages that back onto one of the two proposed private condominium roads. Next slide, please. So these are concepts for the live-work townhomes. So the ground floor on each of these will have a small commercial unit fronting onto Ontario streets with a residential unit above each commercial units. And they'll also have garages at the rear. Because their commercial uses, these will be subject to site plan control as well. And this will ensure a high level of urban design because these, these are going to serve as a gateway to the community from Stratford as a whole. Next slide, please. So as Ms. Bridge discussed, under the city's official plan, the property encompasses the entirety of special policy area 19, which is known as the Stratford East Planning Area. And within this special policy area, the lands bonded for designations, gateway mixed-use in blue, medium density residential in pink, residential in beige, and industrial in gray. The current land use designations were put in place in 2019 by OPA 26, with the exception of the industrial portion that was already in place. Next slide, please. So the, for my estimation, the subject property is only half zoned. When I last looked at the township of East Perth zoning bylaw, the eastern half of the land seemed to be removed from the bylaw. Either way, the western half is currently zoned industrial and the entire property is proposed to be rezoned. Next slide, please. So by comparison, here's the draft zoning schedule that's been submitted. You'll notice that each land use and unit type is proposed to be in its own zone. And the purpose of this amendment is to, is to implement the ineffective official land designations through zoning. As Ms. Bridge addressed earlier, each of the residential unit types is proposed to be placed under a special exception zone. And these exceptions impact such things as setbacks, heights, coverage, yard encroachments, landscape area, and permitted uses. And the goal is to permit a more efficient use of land. The industrial block is proposed to retain the existing general industrial zoning, but with an exception zone added as well. And the exception just impacts permitted uses. I would remove a few incompatible uses and add a few that are compatible with the surrounding uses. And this is in line with the, the secondary plan in the official plan. Now, I won't go into the details of the proposed exceptions now, but you can reach out to us or to city staff if you'd like to review a copy of the draft amendment. And that was also included in the staff report. Finally, the, the park and stormwater management blocks, sorry, blocks would be zoned park. And this is consistent with other areas in the city. Next slide, please. So here's a visual to show you how the draft plan conforms to the ineffective land use destinations. The live-work and rear lane townhouses are proposed in the gateway mixed-use area to the north. The detached street townhouses are interspersed between residential and medium density residential areas. And I'll note that both unit types are permitted in both designations under the official plan. The draft plan proposed to split residential from industrial uses precisely in line with the land use destinations in the official plan. The proposal provides a significant amount of housing in close proximity to employment and commercial uses and will also create new employment and commercial uses. And now, these uses are complementary. It'll create opportunities for residents to live, work, and shop all within their community. Next slide, please. So a number of studies were submitted and supported the application as required by the city. The reports outline how the proposed development is conformity with the applicable policies, technical requirements, and other standards. Importantly, the traffic impact assessment concludes that the existing road network and the new proposed intersections will be able to manage traffic at peak hours. Likewise, the functional servicing and stormwater management report concludes that the proposed development can adequately be serviced by extensions to the existing water and sewer infrastructure and that stormwater can be managed on site. All these reports, again, they're publicly available, so you can reach out to our team or to city staff if you'd like to review any of them. So in terms of process, we've submitted a complete first submission, which is currently under review by the city and external agencies. They've been providing comments and our team will be providing responses and updating our plans and studies accordingly to address comments from city staff, council, agencies, and the public. Once we've addressed these comments, we'll submit a revised application. And this process is repeated until the city and all approval authorities are satisfied with the application. Next slide, please. So as, as, as was discussed earlier, Cooper Standards Automotive Facility is west of this property on Bureau Street. It's approximately 200 meters from the nearest proposed residences, separated by the residential, sorry, from the residential uses by the proposed industrial block. So as part of our second submission, we're undertaking the aforementioned land use compatibility studies. And these will assess the dust odor, air quality, and noise impacts from the existing industrial facility. And these are being undertaken by Dylan Consulting, who's with me today. So these studies will either conclude that there will be no impacts from the existing facility on the proposed homes or they'll make recommendations to mitigate any anticipated impacts. Cachey will implement the required measures, if there are any, to ensure that new residents and the existing facility can peacefully coexist. Now, Cooper Standard is an important employer in Stratford. And they're going to be neighbors with new residents for a long time. So it's important that Cooper Standard can continue their operations as they are today and that new residents aren't impacted by any noise or odor issues. So on that note, our team has already been in contact with Cooper Standard. And we intend to work with them to come to a final plan that's agreeable to all parties. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, the proposed development will create 452 new homes with a mix of different unit types as well as commercial and industrial uses. The proposed zoning bylaw amendments and draft plan of subdivision will implement the ineffective land use policies. The technical studies demonstrate that stormwater can be managed on site, that traffic can be managed by proposed and existing roads. And these studies are currently under review and the plans will be updated to address city and agency comments. Next slide, please. So we're now available. If you have any questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel Henderson.
I just want to make sure, but to me, it looks like none of the homes will be accessible. They're all two or three floors high, right?
Through the mayor, at this time, the, the interior design of the homes hasn't been worked out. They are all two or three stories high. I don't think that means they can't be accessible, though.
Well, you'd have to put an elevator or lift in the home unless you're going to plan to put a bedroom. Because, you know, when you're building a single home, the, the cement is lower in the ground so that it can be, you know, somebody can walk right into their door. They don't have to go up steps or ramps or anything and be able to get into their basement to be a true accessible home. And I mean, I know some developers are building, you know, single level ones, which is a small start towards that, but. And is this the point where I can ask the question about why isn't it 300 meters from Cooper Standard property line?
Through the mayor. At this stage, at this stage, we don't know if there's going to be any impacts. As I, as I alluded to before, the separation distance from a class two facility such as Cooper Standard is 70 meters. So pending the outcome of the land use compatibility studies, there, there may have to be adjustments to the, to the layout of the subdivision. It all depends on what the results of the technical studies find.
And when is that being done?
Through the mayor, it's, it's actually been commenced as we speak. And I should add, any questions, any specific land use compatibility studies? My colleagues from Dylan Consulting are in the meeting as well, so they, they might be able to answer more specific questions.
Right. Counsel Ritzman.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I just want to turn to the agricultural land that is adjacent, will be adjacent to the, the development. Could you review for me how prospective buyers are informed of the agricultural activity that will continue once their home is built? And, you know, it does impact dust, odor, air quality, noise, all parts of agricultural activity.
Through the mayor, what I will say is compatibility between agricultural uses and sense of land uses like residential is typically done at the official plan level. So because the lands are in Stratford's urban area, MDS doesn't apply. I can't speak too much to this now because it hasn't, it's not something that's been discussed at length, but. I mean, if there are concerns about odor from the nearby agriculture or something like a warning clause in an agreement to purchase and sale, this is the type of thing that could advise residents.
Yeah, and, and if I may, just continue through the merit. That, I know of the existing land and I know the owners that will continue to farm adjacent to. And, and certainly with homes being developed, there will be at times challenges with regards to dust from spring cultivation or, or harvest in the fall. There will be odors from frequently manure and sounds of early in the morning and late at nights with regards to harvest. So those are all things that are a challenge that when you talk about impact studies, it's certainly not only with regards to industrial, but certainly the agricultural activity as well. And you'd be surprised how, how individuals that buy homes, you know, adjacent to are surprised about the activities that do take place with the agriculture. And it's, it comes to them as a, as a shock more than, more than not.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Counsel Burbak.
Thank you. Yeah, I just had a question. I see Hydro One has quite a few concerns about the, the high voltage transmission corridor. And I'm, I'm wondering what sort of thoughts or is there a study that's going to happen or some, something that's going to happen with that, that transmission corridor as well?
Through the mayor, that's, I have read the comments, but it's not something within my specific area of expertise. Um, is, is there, could we bring Marcus Gagliardi into the meeting because he may be more equipped to answer that question?
Hi there. Good evening. So I, I apologize. I just got cut out joining the, the meeting as the question was being asked, so I apologize.
No problem. I'll ask it again. So I see in the report that Hydro One has some concerns because of the, the high voltage corridor that's adjacent to the land. So I'm just wondering if there's going to be a study or how those concerns are going to be addressed.
Yeah, so I think we'd have to go back and obviously look at the comments in a little more detail. There, there may be some additional studies required, but it may just be conditions of approval that are implemented through the, through the draft plan by Hydro One. So we'll obviously consult with them after this meeting and into the following weeks. If there is additional studies required, we'll definitely engage to do so. And if there isn't, and it's just a matter of implementing draft approval conditions as well as potentially conditions in the purchase and sale agreements, that's something we've done with, with their agency in the past as well. So I don't have a specific answer in relation to any additional studies, but we have worked with Hydro One in the past with purchase and sale agreements, conditions of draft approval, as well as conditions that are included in the subsequent subdivision agreements and any site plan agreements that may, may be required as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Is, at this point in time, is there any presentations, comments, or questions by registered delegates, Mr. Clark?
Through your worship, we have three registered delegates for this item, the first being John Matthew. We'll work to connect him now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Matthew. Flares yours.
Sorry, through your worship, John, it looks like you're muted there.
Hey, can you hear me now? Yeah, yeah, I was listening, listening to all the meetings and the presentations. I do not have any specific questions at this moment.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. If you have no questions and no presentation, we'll then go to the second one. Mr. Clark?
Through your worship, the second delegation is Thomas Abraham, and we are connecting him now.
Hello? Can I hear me?
Hi, Thomas. Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, I'm listening this presentation and I don't have any more questions.
Thank you very much, Thomas. Our third delegate.
So the third delegate is Anand Srivastava. As the third delegate is Anand Srivastava. And we are working on contacting them now as well.
Good evening, Anand. I'll turn the floor over to you if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mayor Matheson. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thanks for the head nods. Good evening, everybody. My name is Anand Srivastava. I'm a lawyer at Willem's and Shire Environmental Lawyers. And our firm is counsel to Cooper Standard Canada Automotive. I'm here tonight to pick up the discussion that's been started by Counselor Henderson, continued by by Mr. Close, and really expressed to counsel the concerns that Cooper Standard has and seek your approval on how we navigate next steps. Cooper Standard frankly considers itself to be part of the fabric of the city of Stratford. And in that regard, just so you know, on the line, though not presenting with me is Cooper Standards Plant Manager. Similarly, Cooper Standards North American Manager for Health, Safety and Environment is also online tonight. And this matter is of critical importance to Cooper Standard in its operations in Stratford. As you may or may not know, council members, Cooper Standard operates 280,000 squared foot facility at 703 Doro Street, and it's done so for 30 years since 1987. It is a facility that includes industrial operations relating to rubber extrusion, injection molding, and coating applications. And there are 340 full-time staff that are employed at the facility as well as 80 supporting contractors all from in and around the city of Stratford. Deputy Clerk, could I please ask you to bring up the sole figure that I had submitted for presentation? Thank you very much. I know we've seen a few different figures tonight. And I wanted to bring this figure up so that everybody could take a look at the the Cooper Standard property, which is shown from my office in green shading, labeled 703 Duro Street. And adjacent to the Cooper Center property, of course, there's no road there at the moment, but C H Meyer Boulevard is proposed to be continued to the south, across which is the red shaded property that is the subject of this evening's public consultation meeting, labeled 3025 line 34. Thank you, Deputy Clerk. I think we can dispense with the the image. The the land use that surrounds the Cooper Center facility has been for decades, commercial, industrial, and agricultural. And this is deliberate. It's intentional. It's it's all part of the good land use planning that, you know, considers these major facilities and sensitive land uses and how they can coexist. Cooper Standards Industrial Facility is not currently located near residential homes. And as Counselor Henderson noted, the prevailing winds are westerly, that is out of the west towards the east from the Cooper Standard Property to this proposed development property and onwards. We've heard tonight about the roughly 450 residential units that are proposed to be built as close as 200 meters from the Cooper Standard Property line, and we'll use that number as a rough estimate. There is one intervening block that is proposed in between the Cooper Standard Property and the residential homes, which while it's labeled industrial, that zone, as as you all well know, and Miss Bridge and her office know, can permit a whole host of land uses that themselves also could be considered sensitive receptors. So while there may not be a residential home there, I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that the the intervening parcel, as it's currently proposed, may also contain sensitive receptors. We just don't know yet. The proximity that is being proposed presents a significant concern to Cooper Standard on its face, and the concern is about the fact that there's been no analysis completed to date about land use compatibility. I say this with no, you know, negative comments to Mr. Close and his office, but the the original GSAI Planning Justification Report makes only passing reference to the Cooper Standard Property and does not consider any land use planning compatibility concerns. The environmental reporting that was submitted as part of the first phase of this application, as Mr. Close describes, did not consider the Cooper Standard Property. HGC, who is an air and noise environmental consultant, looked at noise from traffic, looked at potential noise and vibration from the CN Road rail line. Unfortunately, there's no mention of Cooper Standard. And that lack of information is troubling. And as a result, Cooper Standard is here before you raising its concern. There's no analysis yet submitted that considers potential noise from the Cooper Standard Facility. There's no analysis submitted relating to potential odor from the Cooper Standard Facility. And there's no analysis submitted relating to potential air emissions from the Cooper Standard Facility. And the reason this is all important, of course, we drive back back to the Planning Act, which in turn drives us to the provincial policy statement most recently issued in 2020. And we have a classic example of what is defined in the PPS, the Provincial Policy Statement, as a major facility. The Cooper Standard Industrial Facility with its manufacturing uses, its industries, and proposed immediately adjacent sensitive land uses, again, as that phrase is defined in the provincial policy statement, where you would expect that, you know, normal activities would be would include people in their homes, people subject to potential adverse effects from contaminants. And of course, residents are listed as an example of sensitive land uses in the provincial policy statement. The the policy at hand specifically, and, you know, I'm happy to talk to you about this detail. Feel free to ask me more questions, but it's policy 1.2.6.1 of the provincial policy statement. Then to those who have had a chance, or those perhaps will in the future have a chance to review our firm's letter dated January 21st of this year, you'll see we get into some detail about that policy in the provincial policy statement and how that policy is set up to first avoid any incompatible land uses. And second, if very specific criteria are met, then we move from avoidance to mitigation of impact. And those specific criteria are the identified need for this proposed use, that there have been alternative locations evaluated, and that there are no reasonable alternative locations, that the adverse effects are able to be minimized and mitigated. And of course, that the potential impacts to the industrial facility are minimized and mitigated. And, you know, with due respect to Kache and their environmental consultants, their land use planning consultants, we have not been provided with any of that information in order to review, comment, and otherwise assess whether these land uses adjacent to one another are compatible. The provincial policy statement is quite clear that the long-term operational and economic viability of major facilities must be considered in land use planning decisions. And Cooper Standard is here because, of course, it wants to be part of the city of Stratford fabric going forward. That's absolutely not in question in terms of its desire. But whether it can do so without impacting its neighbors is a serious concern to Cooper Standard. I'm going to touch on the the references to 70 meters and 300 meters that a few folks have talked about tonight. The the references to Ontario Ministry's Ministry of the Environment's guideline D6. And for those like me who perhaps get into these documents, Cooper Standards Facility is labeled or could be considered or characterized as a class two facility as part of that document. And that document, of course, is designed to assist in land use planning considerations. And the numbers that have been stated are correct, that there's a recommended absolute minimum setback distance of 70 meters between class two facilities and sensitive land uses. The other number that's absolutely correct is that there is a an estimated 300 meter area of influence from a class two facility. So notwithstanding the recommended setback distance, you presumptively have a 300 meter area of influence. But I'm going to go one step further and keep you going into that guideline D6, which is the guideline is is not law. It is not a meet a certain number and you're good to go. The guideline is all about site-specific study to determine whether there are incompatibilities or not. And so as much as we want to sometimes reduce it to a number, it's really not so. And so the guideline, and this is why Cooper Standard is here, contemplates having that information available in order to make that determination about whether there are any incompatibilities or not. Respectfully, and I've heard some of this from from Mr. Claus and some of this, you know, I've had one conversation with Kache's representatives late last week. And I think I'm starting to hear that, you know, the developer Kache really needs to look into these incompatible land uses or at their highest potentially incompatible land uses and propose measures to minimize or mitigate both potential nuisances to the owners, residents of the proposed development, as well as continued viability for the Cooper Standard Facility. That is what is required by the provincial policy statement. And, you know, Cooper Standard is here before you, counsel, to ask the city to require the developer to do so. This is vitally important for Cooper Standard because Cooper Standards environmental approvals are currently premised on its neighbors or lack thereof. And so this process may require Cooper Standard to revisit all of its environmental approvals with the Ministry of the Environment, Conservation and Parks. All of that potentially leading to costly mitigation measures. And I I don't want to be hyperbolic or sensational, but of course, all of this has an impact on Cooper Standards operations at the facility. Similarly, Cooper Standard, if there is no attempt to even try to mitigate or minimize impact, or frankly, even if there is, Cooper Standard is quite concerned about increased exposure to environmental regulatory and or civil liability. So for example, in the regulatory context, notwithstanding compliance with environmental approvals, which of course Cooper Standard will seek out and be in compliance with, is still subject to concerns that neighbors may smell an odor, may hear noise, may experience air emissions, may complain, may allege loss of use and enjoyment of their property, all of which, you know, Cooper Standard does not want to be the case at all. I don't want that to be misconstrued at all. But in that circumstance, you know, Cooper Standard is then potentially into exposure to both regulatory liability, that is what the Ministry of Environment, for example, may ask Cooper Standard to do or not do. And similarly, civil lawsuits in the context of noise, odor, and air emissions, all of which there are lots of precedent for. If you refer to our letter dated January 21st, 2022, you'll see that we walk through a number of examples of both civil liability and regulatory liability where you have incompatible land uses that are adjacent or proximate to one another. So that brings to the end, me to the end of my oral remarks, I ask you to please consider Cooper Standards written submissions. You'll see appended to those written submissions is a technical report by Cooper Standards Environmental Consultant, GHD Consultants. And, you know, Cooper Standard has only had a short period of time to look at this, but, you know, its instruction to GHD was please review the information that's available or frankly, that is not available. And please advise us if there's a concern or not. And you'll see that GHD writes that there is a significant concern due to the lack of information available at this time. The ask of Cooper Standard of this council is to please consider how these incompatible land uses may or frankly, may not coexist. And it sounds like there's a dearth of information about that right now. Ultimately, Cooper Standard wants to protect its neighbors from potential nuisance nuisances. And in that regard, you know, if there is any prospect of redevelopment that's compatible, the developer has to commit to investigate and then pay for implementation and mitigation measures at the Cooper Standard Property, if that's technically feasible. I I don't know if that is the case or not. And similarly, at the proposed redevelopment, I think we're starting, we've just dipped our toe into that type of dialogue. But respectfully, that's got to continue. I would be happy to take any and all questions.
Thank you. Any question this time? Counselor Vasilakos.
This may be a question for Mr. Srivastava, but also for staff. During, so under the official plan designation for this area and the redesignation of it, was Cooper Standard? Had they made any submissions with respect to the future use of residential in this area? And I'm just wondering, only because we did go through a process to resonate to, we designated under the official plan.
Through the mayor, Counselor Vasilakos, I can speak to that in part, and others may wish to chime in, but Cooper Center was not a party to the Ontario, what is now the Ontario Land Tribunal process.
Through your worship, I'd add one further item to Counselor Vasilakos' question is that that official plan amendment process would have been a fully public process with notice given as per the Planning Act. So that would have went to all property owners within a certain proximity to the subject property as well as posted in the Beacon Herald as well.
So if I may follow up, so Miss Bridge would, Cooper Standard would have fallen within that notice? I believe that notice radius?
Through your worship, that's my understanding, Counselor Vasilakos, but I can go back to the mailing notification list and confirm that.
Thank you.
Anything further? All right, thank you very much. If you could just one second. Are there any questions that are in the public chat box?
Through your worship, there are no questions in the question and answer feature at this moment.
Okay. Any further questions from members of council? I see Mr. Gagliardi's hand, but the applicant does have the opportunity at the end to speak. So if you just be patient, is there any other questions from members of council? For any of the people that have made presentations or the applicant or city staff? Right, Mr. Gagliardi, on behalf of the applicant, I'm not sure if you or Mr. Close is going to close, but I'll leave it to you for your summation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll let Mr. Close give his closing comments just in a minute. I just ultimately want to just present a message and a commitment to the council as well as staff as well as well as our neighbors at Cooper Automotive. Obviously, you know, we're coming into the the neighborhood as as new neighbors. But we ultimately want to do the right thing. I appreciate that there was a lengthy official plan process that went on in 2018 and 2019 at the Ontario Municipal Board. We ultimately weren't a part of that process. But at the end of the day, we realize that we do have neighbors here, whether it be agricultural neighbors or industrial neighbors. And we ultimately want to commit to do the right thing, which is why we've already reached out to representatives at Cooper Automotive and will be making those exact commitments that that their representative asked for in terms of land use compatibility studies, odor studies, and everything else that goes along with those studies, whether it be potential mitigation or separation distances. So I just wanted to put counsel at ease in terms of the studies that will be ongoing in the next few weeks and months. And I'll leave it to Mr. Close for any closing remarks.
Thank you. Mr. Close? Thank you. Mr. Close.
Through the mayor, I, I can't really say anything that Marcus didn't just say. Um, so I'll uh, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much. A city council intends to consider this application at a future planning and heritage committee meeting where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion of the application after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like further notice of this application, please email clerks@stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website and this public meeting is adjourned. I will now call to order our second public meeting of the evening. And the purpose of this meeting is to give council and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zone change application. Zed one five dash two four two one, the application affects the property through municipal address of five 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 Downey Street in the city of Stratford. The order procedure for this meeting is as follows. The staff, staff present the application. The applicant or their agent will then make a presentation. Council may ask questions for the purposes of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comments nor take a position on this application at this public meeting. Registered delegations will be asked for their presentations, comments and questions. Questions and comments from the Q and A section of the online portal will be read into the record by the clerk's office staff member. Public is advised that if a person has not provided counsel with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submission before a bylaws adopted or decision is made, the Ontario Land Tribunal has the power to dismiss an appeal. Public is also advised that comments expressed and written material presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to this order procedure this evening? Seeing then, we'll now proceed with the meeting and I'll ask Jeff Bannon uh, to make the presentation on behalf of staff, Mr. Bannon.
Thank you, your worship. Zone change application Z fifteen dash twenty one was submitted by Baker Planning Group to rezone the lands from neighborhood commercial, C one to neighborhood commercial special zone to add retail stores of permitted use to permit a reduced size of parking spaces to, to permit reduced rear yard setbacks and a reduced parking setback from the roadway and a reduced parking with sorry, a reduced parking rate for a total of ten parking spaces on site. Application was submitted on December seventh, twenty twenty one in a planning justification report and a conceptual site plan were submitted in support of the application. The subject lands are located on the southeast corner of Downey Street and Norfolk Street. Surrounding land uses to the north are duplex dwellings and single detached dwellings. To the east are single detached dwellings. To the south is a supermarket and to the west is a duplex dwelling and single detached dwellings. The subject properties designated as residential area in the official plan, the destination permits arranged for residential uses, including triplex dwellings, townhouse dwellings and low rise apartments. Convene's commercial uses are permitted in all designations, including that residential area if they meet certain locational criteria. They must have direct access to an arterial or collector road and the maximum size of an establishment shall generally not exceed two hundred and thirty five square meters. The lands are zoned, C one neighborhood commercial, which permits land uses that include a gas bar, laundromat, motor vehicle service station, neighborhood store, takeout and eatout restaurants. The zoning of the lands would allow for retail store with the maximum gross floor area of ninety five square meters or reduce parking requirement and site specific setbacks to recognize the existing building and the existing situation on the property. It circulated um, the application to city departments and engineering services to have no objection to the application. They want us to confirm the length and width of the parking spaces comply with the zoning bylaw and community services, Canada Post, Festival Hydro and Building Services all have no concerns. Notice of the application was also sent to a hundred and twelve budding property owners on December sixteenth of twenty twenty one was included in the town crier in the Beacon Herald. And one letter has been received with the resident objecting the cannabis store being allowed on the subject plans. The other future agency or public comments received after the completion of the report will be provided to the planning heritage committee in a future planning report. I'm available to answer any questions. Through your worship.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bannon. Is there any questions from members of council at this time? Seeing none, I'll invite Caroline Baker, agent for the applicant, to make a presentation. Ms. Baker, good evening.
A good evening to your worship, uh, members of council, uh, Caroline Baker from Baker Planning Group. Uh, here this evening on behalf of the owners of five 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 Downey Street uh, with respect to these own change application. If I might ask clerks to share, I do have a brief presentation. Perfect, thank you. And if I could get you just to move to the next slide, I wanted to provide a brief summary of the, oh, just yeah, perfect, thank you. A brief summary of the application, uh, along with its intent and some additional information uh, on the potential uh, business to locate on the site. As noted uh, by Mr. Bannon, uh, the subject site is located at the intersection of Downey Street and Norfolk Street, uh, which could be considered a minor commercial node with uh, two neighborhood stores, a grocery store, a gas station and former restaurant, I believe, Festival Pizza. Uh, uses uh, beyond that, as noted, are low rise uh, residential. Uh, next slide, please. As noted, uh, the owner is proposing to retenant to the now vacated pizza restaurant uh, with a retail use. And supportive of the zone change application, uh, we did prepare uh, the conceptual site plan that's before you. And what you'll see is two units within the existing building. So unit one is the convenience store accessory to the existing gas station. Unit two is the former uh, pizza restaurant uh, that's proposed to be converted to a retail use. Uh, no building changes are proposed to the exterior, no building additions. Uh, the existing accesses are proposed to be maintained. There is some reorganization of the parking to try and optimize and gain additional parking to what is currently there today. Uh, next slide. In addition to requesting the specific use uh, for retail, uh, given that this property was constructed a number of years ago, certain provisions uh, were considered legal noncompliant to the zoning bylaw. Uh, this included uh, the parking space size, uh, the number of parking spaces, uh, the parking location to Downey Street and the rear yard setback. So really, because the owners were applying for the additional use, uh, was an opportunity to bring the site uh, into compliance. I would note with the proposed parking wait rate, uh, while it's reduced from uh, the current requirements of the bylaw, it's actually an overall net improvement and brings the site closer to compliance with the zoning bylaw. Uh, a restaurant does have a significantly higher parking requirement than a retail use. Next slide, please. Uh, as noted uh, by one of uh, the resident comments that received, there was concern about the proposed retail use uh, being a cannabis store. Uh, certainly for full clarity, the owners have been approached by a potential cannabis operator uh, to locate within the proposed retail space. Um, as I'm sure a council is aware, uh, early in twenty nineteen, council did pass a resolution, um, as requested by the province uh, to declare that any cannabis store would be considered a retail use. And anywhere that retail use is permitted, uh, it could um, be occupied by cannabis store. We did also, however, ensure that uh, this proposed retail use location is appropriately set back from any schools uh, per provincial guidelines with a hundred and fifty meter setback. Next slide, please. And just to summarize the presentation, the application, as part of the application, we did prepare a planning justification report that concluded uh, the retenanting of existing commercial space in a minor commercial node uh, for a small scale retail use uh, with limits in size is appropriate and represents good land use planning. It will allow for the reuse of existing infrastructure. The site is located on an arterial road. In our opinion, the proposed retail use uh, does not create any additional compatibility issues beyond uh, the historical uh, restaurant use in terms of noise, traffic generation or hours of operation. Uh, that does conclude my presentation, but I'd be happy to answer any questions uh, that council or members of the public may have.
Much, Ms. Baker. Any questions for Ms. Baker? Counselor Clifford.
Thank you, your worship. If I could have a clarification, are we increasing the parking? Are we taking parking away? I, I, I'm confused what you said there, Ms. Baker.
Uh, through your worship to councillor Clifford, thank you for the question. And it, I understand why it's confusing because it's a little bit of both. Uh, physically on the site, um, as a result of this proposed change, there will be additional parking. So on the site, there will be a net improvement. The commentary about a parking reduction is that a parking reduction in the number of required parking spaces in the context of the zoning bylaw, um, if that provides some clarification. So the proposed retail use has a lower parking rate than the former restaurant use. Uh, so it's bringing it in closer to compliance, but not in full compliance.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Baker? Seeing none at this time, uh, I'd ask if there's any registered delegations for this presentation, Mr. Bannon.
Through your worship, uh, we have no registered delegations uh, for this item.
Okay, and do we uh, have anything in the chat box?
Uh, through your worship, there is one question in the chat box at this time. Um, it's from an anonymous attendee and it's a question related to, uh, will it be a specialized cannabis store?
Through your worship, I'm not sure if we need a bit of clarification on the question. Not sure if that's possible in the, the chat function by what they're determining specialized cannabis.
Well, um, in actual fact, actually, to speak at a public meeting, you have to uh, state your name uh, for the record and everyone else who's registered as an attendee has that. Um, so unless that person wants to come forward with, with identifying with at least a name, uh, we'll just move on from that question. As, as I understand, that is the requirements of the Planning Act and I'll ask the deputy clerk if, if I am correct on that.
Uh, that would be correct and uh, we can um, we can see if anything further is provided.
Thank you. All right. Now, are there any questions and comments other than that one that members of council would like to make at this time? Counselor Henderson.
I guess it's kind of got my curiosity that I didn't realize there was different types of cannabis stores. Like what would a specialized cannabis store be? Do we know?
Ms. Baker, do you have any definition that was in the zoning bylaw that you uh, would rely on with regard to that?
Uh, through your worship, um, to councillor Henderson, the zoning bylaw does not differentiate uh, or specifically define cannabis as a permitted use in any zone. Uh, cannabis is considered to be uh, completely a retail use and permitted under that definition. So there's nothing specific in either cannabis or specialized cannabis. I can certainly endeavor uh, to try and find more information on that um, to assist staff as we come back.
No, that's fine. I can Google it.
So, Ms. Baker, if you could actually, uh, maybe in your follow-up, include that if you happen to see anything with regard to specialized, but uh, right now, I think what you're telling us is under the retail zoning of the city, it's permitted in a retail zone, correct? And there is no definition of specialized.
Correct.
Thank you. Hope that helps whoever posed the question. All right, are there any other questions? If not, to the final word to you, Ms. Baker, on behalf of the applicant.
Uh, no, thank you.
All right. City council intends to consider this application at a future planning and heritage committee meeting where members of council will have an opportunity for full discussion of the application after viewing comments received and from the public at this time. If anyone would like to receive further notice with regard to this application, please email clerks@stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website and this public meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. I'll call that ordering third public meeting of the evening. And the purpose of this meeting is to give council and the public an opportunity to hear all interested persons with respect to zone change application Z sixteen dash twenty one. The application affects the property with the municipal address of four one nine two Short Street in the city of Stratford. The order procedure for this meeting is as follows. The app, uh, staff will present the application. The applicant or their agent will then make a presentation. Council may ask questions for the purpose of clarifying the application, but are cautioned not to make comments or take a position on this application at this time. Registered delegations will be asked for their presentations, comments and questions. Questions and comments from the Q and A chat box will be read by clerk's office staff member. The public is advised that if a person has not provided counsel with oral submissions at a public meeting or written submissions prior to a bylaw being adopted or a decision is made, the Ontario Land Tribunal has the power to dismiss an appeal. The public is also advised that comments expressed and written material presented are a matter of public record for full disclosure. Are there any questions as to this order procedure? Seeing them, we'll now proceed to hear the application and Jeff Bannon will be presenting it as our staff planner, Mr. Bannon.
Thank you, your worship. Zone change application Z sixteen dash twenty one was submitted by GSP Group to rezone the lands from agricultural a zone in the former township of Perth East zoning bylaw to a residential second density special zone and a residential fourth density R four bracket two special zone in to the city of Stratford zoning bylaw. The applicant is requesting special provisions in the residential second density RT bracket two zone to decrease the minimum interior lot area for semi-detached dwellings, to reduce the minimum corner lot area for singly detached dwellings and to increase the maximum lot coverage. They're also requesting in the residential fourth density special zone, R four bracket two, uh, to decrease the minimum lot area, to reduce the minimum corner lot area, to reduce the corner lot frontage, the minimum front yard setback, the minimum exterior side yard setback and uh, to increase the maximum lot coverage. Application was submitted on December second of twenty twenty one. The planning justification report, a functional servicing, the storm water management brief and a concept plan were all submitted in support of the application. Subject lands are located on northeast corner of Short Street in Alone Avenue. And the surrounding land uses to the north, there is a farmhouse agriculturally zoned lands. To the east are semi-detached dwellings, to the south are sorry, to the east are singly detached dwellings, to the south are semi-detached dwellings. And to the west is singly detached dwelling, which is in agricultural lands. Subject properties designated residential area in the official plan, which allows for a range of residential uses, including triplex townhouse dwellings and low rise apartments. Will answer zone agricultural in the former township of Perth East zoning bylaw. The zone permits a range of agricultural uses, including a farm, home occupation and existing non-farm residential uses and uses that are accessory to those permitted uses. Res zoning the lands to residential second density special zone will allow for future semi-detached dwellings with reduced minimum lot area and singly detached dwelling lots with a reduced minimum lot, corner lot area and an increased maximum lot frontage. And the resoning of the lands to a residential fourth density special zone would allow for a future townhouse street townhouse dwellings with reduced minimum end lot area, corner lot fringe, front yard setbacks, corner lot area, exterior side yard setbacks and increased maximum block coverage. Through the agency circulation, we've received some comments back. Building services have noted their record site condition is required and that their property is located within the upper Thames River Conservation Source Water Protection Area. Comments will be required to be provided by the UTRCA before any billing permits can be issued on the property. Community services in Canada Post have no concerns and the city's clerks department has noted that there are no parking concerns with application. Festival Hydro has noted that the subject lands are outside of their territory. They're in hydro one service territory. If the developer wants festival hydro to service the area, then a formal request has to be made to them. Engineering division has given us several comments. Um, they have noted again that record site condition is required. Short Street is an unimproved road and has to be constructed to municipal standard. They've noted that the property falls within the vulnerable area of the production well. And a confirmation has to be provided that development does not create a threat to the municipal water supply. With the sanitary connection, the development is serviced through the future sanitary truck trunk sewer on Alone Avenue. And the developer has to extend existing water main on Alone Avenue to complete the water main on Short Street. Uh, they've also noted that the city does not accept super pipes in municipal roadways for storm water management control. Storm water outlet for these lands is a pure municipal drain and the report has to be updated to show how the drain can be accommodated in the design without major overland flows being directed to a Matilda Street. The roadworks, street A must extend to the new extension of Short Street and the boundaries grades must match the accepted design for the reconstructed Short Street and the pavement design has to meet our city standards. grades must match the accepted design for the reconstructed Short Street, and the pavement design has to meet our city standards. We received several comments from the public. The application was sent to seventy-five abutting property owners, and it was included in the town card in the Beacon Herald. Comments that have come back from property owners are that applicant should not be allowed to reduce the residential zoning requirements when the purchaser should have known that by the regulations when they bought the property. They're concerned with the loss of agricultural lands, density within the area, shadowing impacts in the height of the buildings to be constructed, the potential for a loss of landscape, open space within the new properties. They have safety concerns with how Short Street will be constructed, the potential of stormwater management problems. They believe that there's a lack of recognition and consultation with Indigenous Peoples' application. There are concerns with the impact of the development on species at risk, impacts of increased safety of the students and children, and increased traffic in the area. The impacts on the development of human health from the subdivision, potential increases of street parking in the area, and the impact of the future development on existing sanitary services. You're also concerned with the decrease in the privacy of the decent landowners and the potential for decreased property values. We've also received comments after the PowerPoint presentation report was submitted. From those comments, one neighbor expressed a concern with the temporary cul-de-sac at the end of Blow's Drive, and they want to have that cul-de-sac remain, and they want to see the future development of the property to the north and how that development would connect to Blow's Drive as they are residents on that street. Any agency or public comments received out the completion of the report will be provided through a future report to the planning heritage committee. Through your worship, I'm available to answer any questions related to that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bannon. Questions from members of council? Seeing none at this time, representing the applicant this evening is Evan Whitman. I'll ask Mr. Whitman to be let in and allow him to.
Hey, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Whitman.
Perfect. We just asked that the presentation that I submitted earlier be shared. Wonderful, thank you. Okay, so thank you for the public, everyone, for joining us tonight. We're happy to present the proposal and hear the feedback and comments you have today. I'm Evan Whitman, a planner with GSP Group, and I'm joined in the audience today by Steve Weaver, an associate and senior planner with GSP Group, as well as our client, Galaxy Fine Homes, the developer and owner of the property. Next slide, please. So a quick outline of the presentation tonight over the next twenty or so slides. I'll be presenting a proposed plan for forty-one ninety-two Short Street. So include an overview of the plan's conformity to the provincial and city planning frameworks, as well as the zoning bylaw and proposed amendment. We will also provide an overview of the existing character of this area of the city and how the plan is integrated into that. And lastly, we will listen to your comments and answer questions. Next slide, please. As noted, Galaxy Fine Homes is the developer for the project. They are a Guelph-based, full-service, custom home construction company, active in Southern Ontario since about 2015. Some of their ongoing projects include a semi-detached housing development in Harrison, as well as a townhouse development in Guelph. Galaxy Fine Homes have received several inquiries for townhouses and semi-detached housing styles, and as such, they are incorporated into this plan to help meet market demand. Next slide, please. So moving on to the subject site itself, it's approximately two hectares in area located at the intersection of Short Street and Alone Avenue. The site currently features a two-story building with the balance of the site being grassed area with some minimal tree coverage. Next slide, please. So the proposed plan, we're proposing to introduce a mix of single detached, semi-detached, and townhouse units to the site. This image here has been rotated, shows Short Street is along the top of the image there. The single detached units are the lighter yellow, and they are located along Street A and are adjacent to the existing single detached houses next to the property boundary there. Along Street B are the townhouse units, and they lead to the cul-de-sac where the semi-detached units are located. Next slide, please. The mix of housing proposed is eight single detached units, twelve semi-detached, and twenty-eight townhouses for a total of forty-eight houses. And as shown on the concept, there's a road widening along Alone Avenue, as well as a daylight triangle at the intersection to ensure there's safe sightlines at the intersection. The two roads that are proposed, Streets A and B, will be constructed at municipal standard, and there'll be a freehold housing unit, so this will not be a plan of condominium. Street A provides a roadway connection to Short Street, as well as a future connection to future development that may occur on the adjacent parcel. Next slide, please. So moving to the policy overview, the provincial policy statement, or PPS, is issued under the authority of the Planning Act, and decisions affecting planning matters shall be consistent with the issued policy statements. The PPS directs that there must be an appropriate range and mix of housing options and densities to meet the projected market-based affordable housing needs of current and future residents. The PPS also directs that residential intensification, redevelopment, and new residential development to minimize the cost of housing and facilitate compact form, such as the proposed plan, are to be promoted. Next slide, please. At the local level, the city of Stratford official plan, or OP, provides specific policy direction for the lands in the city. The site is designated as residential area, which permits low and medium density residential uses. All the housing types proposed are permitted under this designation. Next slide, please. The OP directs that there is to be a full range of housing choices, and the maximum residential density is limited to twenty-five units per hectare. The site is also included in the Stratford West secondary plan area, which directs that the lands in this area are intended to generally remain low density with some areas of medium density. The proposed plan achieves a density of twenty-five units per hectare through the mix of the three housing types, which aligns with the policies of the OP. Next slide, please. Regarding the zoning bylaw, the site is zoned A or agricultural, which currently limits the development potential of the site, meaning that a zone change will be required to move to a residential zone, which we have proposed as residential zones two and four, with some site-specific amendments. This zone change implements the land use designation of the OP, which directs for residential uses on the site. And the site-specific amendments are generally minor in nature, and as we will see, apply to a small collection of the units. Next slide, please. So an overview of the R two zone and our amendment. The R two zone will apply to just the portions of the site where the single and semi-detached units are located, and each specific housing type has their own set of requirements. And as you can see, specifically, the three-square-meter reduction to the interior lot area semi-detached is quite minor. And the amended exterior lot area for the single detached unit remains at over four hundred square meters, which is quite suitable for a single detached lot. The amended maximum lot coverage is done to ensure well-designed livable houses can be constructed, and in conjunction with setbacks and frontages, it does resolve quite a restrictive building footprint when maximum block covered is also incorporated into that, so a little relief there makes everything work together from a development standpoint. Next slide, please. And then with the R four zone, this will apply to just the townhouse units. So again, some amendments are required to these, to the end lot. It's again a minor three square meter reduction, and the corner lot area remains at a fairly substantial lot size. Worth noting that the typical zone requirement for a single detached lots is three hundred. So this three hundred and twenty is still greater than that for a single detached and much larger house. The reductions in frontage and exterior side yard for corner lots, we believe maintains the intent of the zone, and it's a modernized approach to help provide desirable housing. Next slide, please. So this image demonstrates how these amendments are being implemented. In the black outlined lots, these are the specific lots that require the amendment aside from lot coverage, so only one single detached, only one semi-detached, and just the end townhouse units are the ones that are receiving relief from these exceptions. The other forty-two lots are in compliance with the respective residential zones. Next slide, please. And then lastly, we'll quickly discuss how the proposed plan integrates with the existing context of the area. The area currently features a mix of primarily single detached and semi-detached dwellings in a mix of single-story bungalow and townhouse forms, or sorry, two-story forms. This character is further established through recent developments between McCarthy Road and Short Street, which provides smaller, single detached housing lots and a mix of some townhouse units as well. To the south of the site, there are two secondary schools and some significant park space that will be further supported by the proposed plan. Next slide, please. So to further help demonstrate this, we've put together a quick graphic that outlines the area as well as the proposed plan over top to see how everything will fit together. The proposed single detached lots, as you'll notice, are located adjacent to the current single detached houses, which provides a nice consistent transition to the existing built forms. And regarding these red outlines here, the one on the left around Bell Court and Gemmell Court, this is where primarily single detached housing is featured. And then on the right, the red circle for townhouse units, there has been some townhouses introduced in this recent development as well. And the area in general does feature generally smaller lot size, single detached units, particularly along Foreman Ave and Fraser Avenue. Next slide, please. Just to help show this context a little more, the next three slides, we'll see a couple images of the area. The first one being the single detached units along Foreman Avenue, which would be comparable to those proposed through this plan. Next slide, please. And then next up are the semi-detached units along Bell and Gemmell Court. These are also in a cul-de-sac layout, so quite similar to that that is being proposed. And next slide, please. Lastly, we see the townhouse units along Robertson and Davidson Drives, which again would be comparable to those proposed through the plan. And overall, this demonstrates that the plan is quite representative of the built forms in the area and is compatible with things that exist there today. Next slide, please. So to summarize, the proposed plan is consistent with the PPS, conforms to the OP. It will provide more affordable housing options and add the housing options available in the city. And the proposed plan is consistent with the prevailing character of the city. Next slide, please. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those if I can, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Whitman. Counselor Ingram and Counselor Henderson.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. My first question relates to the lot coverage. So fifty percent maximum lot coverage, that would be approximately half the lot, actually half the lot. Would that include any accessory structures, detached structures, any sort of roofed outdoor amenity areas? Or is that just inclusive of the main dwelling?
That is a good question. I believe at this point, it considers just the main building area of the house.
So conceivably, once we add in any roofed outdoor amenity space plus any sheds or detached structures, you could be at seventy-five to eighty percent coverage.
Actually, I guess it would depend on how those buildings would be classified in the zoning bylaw, and if they're incorporated under the how that coverage is done.
I do see our planner has their hand up, if you don't mind jumping in.
Oh, no, go ahead. Yeah.
Through your worship, yeah, so the lot coverage includes any buildings that are located on the property. So the fifty percent would include any accessory structures on the land, too. It's not exclusive of that.
Perfect, thank you. And then my next question relates to the exterior side yard and the reduction to two and a half meters, that's a fair fair bit of a reduction. And have you done any analysis as to how that would fit in with the existing streetscape? Is there an alignment there? Would this this reduction actually stand out in the streetscape?
That's something we can study a little bit further as we put in the municipal roads, the sidewalks and things, that will be incorporated in that, so we can see how the building face will interface with the public realm, as this will all be a totally new development for the area. So that's something we can we can further analyze.
Thank you. And if you could include the existing structures and their property boundaries just adjacent to that as well, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Counselor Ingram. Counselor Henderson, I saw your hand next.
Yes, I saw that you had some semis in there, so they look like they're like one floor, but those semis that I've been in over in Gemmell that either have to go downstairs or upstairs. When you go in them, are you planning to build any that would be accessible? So that, you know, people that are in wheelchairs or have walkers or mobility issues going up and downstairs, are any of them planning to be built? Or to be planned so that if somebody wants to have it accessible, it would be able to be done?
Yeah, through your worship, that's something we can definitely consider as we continue going on through the planning. We're still pretty early on in the process, so things like accessibility and the details of the design of the houses are something we can further refine as we go along.
That'd be great. And another thing is, you know, the prices are proximated, you know, affordability is always in a lot of people's minds.
In terms of price, it's quite tough to say. It feels like everything's getting higher and higher these days. It is a mix of units being proposed, so just in sort of ballpark affordability, the single detached will be the most expensive, followed by semis, followed by the townhouses, which just granted by their built form will be the most affordable, but in terms of market rate and how far we are from when they will be developed, it's tough to say at this point what they'll be for estimated market price.
And my last question is about, you've heard we've passed climate change, and a lot of cities are going to get involved. We just had a presentation from our developer out in the different sections of the city, well, closer area, and he's building his to net zero standards. What kind of environmental considerations are you taking into account when you are building these? I know a lot of this comes late in the site plan, but doesn't hurt to get the ball on the roll at the beginning.
Yeah, for sure. And those are things that we can, of course, explore further as we get along through the process, things like high-efficiency appliances and good HVAC systems and things like that are things that I'm sure we'll look into providing for the development.
I'm thinking GL thermal, I'm thinking solar panels, I'm thinking UV chargers, I mean chargers for your car, you know, like things like that.
Okay.
Heat pumps instead of furnaces.
Counselor Clifford, did I see your hand?
Yeah, yes. I was going to ask what Counselor Henderson talked about. When you're in the report, you talk about affordable housing, but are you talking about like attainable housing? Because when you say portable housing, it is quite specific, so I would ask that again. Is it attainable houses, your actual attainable prices you're talking about?
Yes, that would be correct. Under, it's not as strictly as defined affordable housing as the PPS, I believe, defines it, but it is a a form of more affordable than compared to say a single detached through the provision of townhouses, which by their nature are a more affordable option than than singles and semis.
Thank you. Is there any other, Counselor Henderson?
Sorry, I forgot one of my questions. So as this development goes forward, is that farmhouse in that area being all tore down?
At this point, it is something that would be removed from the site, yes.
All right. Anything further? Are there any registered delegates, Mr. Van Tuck, or delegations?
Through your worship, we have one registered delegate, Robert Blackwell, and we will look to join him into the meeting now. Hi, Mr. Blackwell, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much for allowing us to have a voice here this evening. I'm here with my wife, Brenda.
Hello.
We know that first of all, worship and counselors, we know that we've had an opportunity here to express some concerns that we've raised. We know there's a number of other folks on the street. We've talked to a couple of them here in regards to the zoning application and the change. Some of us on the street that we've talked to have had concerns about lot size. And Counselor Ingram, I see you've raised that concern as well. Thank you for doing that. We do have concerns here, and our neighbors to the north of us, Keith and Ken, they also raise a similar concern. Our lot and neighbors on this side of Foreman, we back on to forty-one ninety-two Short Street. We back on to forty one ninety two, Short Street, and we would probably be in the area where the uh, single homes are proposed to be developed there. Um, I do have concerns about the lot sizes and what's being proposed there. My bigger concerns though, excuse me, are more of the, um, the stormwater runoff and the, and the drainage and some of the landscape and that. It seems like a lot of the areas that, um, are proposed here don't have many green spaces in them. I think that's something that, um, the city is very aware of and would like to continue to have. With the condensing of the zones and, and the number of, uh, structures there, it doesn't appear as though there would be an opportunity for much in the way of, of green space on the front. Certainly in the townhouses from the perspectives that were provided. I don't see much of any green space there at all. So it looks like it's all, um, I think it would called zero lot line or close to zero lot line for those particular homes. I'd be a little concerned about how the neighborhood would look in that regard. Uh, in respect to, uh, land, uh, water runoff. We've been here in Stratford now, this will be coming up our fifth year. Uh, we've experienced two extreme weather events while we've been here. And within our first year of being here, we actually had a flood in our basement. I'm very concerned about the, uh, storm runoff and the drainage that's being proposed for the subdivision. I don't see anything in the plan that indicates, um, a very good plan in terms of water runoff. I see that other subdivisions are being built around that have storm control management and ponds, that is. And I would, I think that, uh, the best spot, the best way to approach this would be with a storm pond, some description. Which sort of brings up another point, and that would be we seem to be piecemealing this subdivision in to the, uh, larger plan that we don't as, um, occupants of the home here and residents of this particular area don't have a good understanding of. Uh, we see the plan put forward by GSP and the Development Group. But we have no knowledge of what, um, is to be proposed or what is going in to be the north of that, uh, particular development. Uh, we have some, uh, concerns of the overall look and feel of the area. And we're wondering is that, if at some point we could be advised and brought up to speed on that as well. Um, our biggest concern as I'm pointing out is the, the water and drainage, the storm runoff. I did have concerns about sewage and, um, water connection. Uh, but Jeff, uh, from the city there replied back to me. I received his comments on Friday. And I do see that, um, sewage and that would have to be connected to a loan, which would be a, a, an extension of a trunk line. So those, those concerns I think are somewhat addressed and will probably be way far out in the future. I just, uh, want to be sure that the zones, the zoning itself is, is not, um, reduced or overburdened with homes. I appreciate the fact that we need to build homes and, and, uh, provide affordable housing. But I think that the zoning that's being proposed here is just getting a little bit too condensed and a little bit too concerning for Brenda and myself and some of the neighbors along the fence line here in regards to, uh, water runoff and privacy and, uh, items of that nature. If I may direct a question to, um, uh, to Evan. Um, I, maybe my understanding of the official plan, is it correct? But when I read through the official plan, it suggests that the lot here forty one ninety two, uh, Short Avenue was actually supposed to be a school. It does talk about, in the official plan, it does talk about, uh, residential areas along into the north here, but it specifically points to the area where, uh, forty one ninety two is as being a, um, school there. Um, could you provide some insight for me, maybe at a later date, as to where you see that that should be residential in forty one ninety two and not a school as proposed in the general plan?
Uh, sure, we can provide, uh, I suppose an update at some point, or, uh, if I could also call some of the city staff as well to, uh, you provide a comment on, on the wording in the secondary plan there, um, if possible.
Yeah, that would be appreciated. Thank you very much. Um, other concerns that we have and, and, um, I think Councilor Ingram raised a couple of them with regards to uh, her zoning concerns, and of course I share that, and so does my wife Brenda. Is that, um, we're trying to understand a little more about the process of zoning application, subdivision, division application. And, um, what's all involved in terms of reviews and reports. Some of our bigger concerns is our privacy here. Uh, we see the, um, the lot size is going to be fifty percent coverage, which suggests to us based on the house sizes that the rear of the homes that would be on the rear of our home are not going to be too far from the fence line. And if they're, um, single family, two-story dwellings, it gives opportunity for the people in those dwellings to be very close and we've got bedrooms on the back of our home here that, uh, privacy is a bit of concern, I guess, is, is our concern here. Um, massing studies, um, we're a little bit concerned about shadow. We do face, our yard does face to the west. We have some beautiful gardens here that are just doing well from the amount of sunlight. We're very concerned that shadows from any two-story home would, uh, create a bit of an issue for us in terms of light into the gardens. And, um, just grading in general and the height of the buildings. Um, Jeff did indicate that buildings could be no higher than ten meters, which I think is thirty two feet. So it suggests that a two-story home could be built there. Uh, possibly even a three, depending on, on the structure. So we are a little bit concerned of that as well. So, um, these are my thoughts on, on the, uh, proposed plan. I think it's a little bit overzealous in terms of a lot size and planting a lot size, but I definitely have concerns about, uh, storm runoff and, and water, uh, drainage and that type of thing. And, and any comments?
I, 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 I know that it's a, it's a lot for us to absorb and that you folks probably hear about these things all the time. So, uh, bear with us as we learn along the way here. Uh, living in the, uh, neighborhood, I can tell everyone that it's a bit of a gong show when the schools are up and running. And we got a great reprieve with the pandemic that our wonderful youth in the high schools aren't driving and zooming around. Our road system is really incomplete here. When you add another hundred potential vehicles right on the other side of our fence and not plan with a good traffic and flow plan, I mean pedestrian, uh, mothers walking with their children, dog walkers. This just feels so, um, uh, such an undeveloped construct here. I don't feel it's really a plan. It's sort of a nice idea. But if you live here and you're on the edge of what's going on with McCarthy and alone, it's actually quite dangerous what could happen here. So I just say that broadly speaking, because I think that the new development has to consider the road construction in the early days of infrastructure, attention to sewage and, and water. Um, the other piece I have is just a broad comment about the role of the city and planning in being more responsible to our environment. Uh, you know, we're all aware of, uh, flood levels. There's a designated flood area on the site plan. And I think that would behoove the developer to take a closer look at, um, the, um, the lot, um, fifty percent, uh, use and what will happen when people put their sheds and whatnot in. We're making a concrete world for ourselves. And if we don't speak up and use our democratic voice, nothing's going to change. And we have so many good things that can be done on the inside of our homes through the builders, and we have great builders in this area. But we've got to do more as a community to make this look more coherent and responsible from a, um, a climate point of view. Um, I asked everybody to drive by and see our twelve trees that we put in our yard. Have to green and we, we have to make these things a real priority. They have to come up and butt in with the economic and value of the property. So I think if we really try hard, it can be done. And, um, I'm certainly willing to have many, many more conversations to help this be a shining example of good development on the very fringe of Stratford. It doesn't have to look ugly. Um, but it's, it's kind of looking ugly out there right now. And I'd love to see a brand new plan with a different type of, um, uh, density pondered by the GSP group. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the opportunity and, um, Mayor, thank you and counselors, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Blackwell, Mrs. Blackwell. Uh, we have the Director of Infrastructure on, Mr. Crinklaugh, why don't you give us an update on the McCarthy Road Extension? As it, uh, is contemplated connecting McCarthy Ordo alone, if you would.
Yes, uh, through your worship. Um, currently we are investigating options to, uh, have that road constructed, uh, hopefully this year. Uh, we still have to, some, some ground to cover and some discussions to have with the, the landowner before that can proceed. So, uh, we're still in the, the planning stage, but we're, we're hopeful that we'll actually get to this year.
I appreciate that. My hope would be after four years, we could maybe get that done sooner rather than later. So hopefully it's a priority. All right. Any members of council have any, uh, I guess we have some Q and A's, uh, within the, the box. I'll turn it over to the uh, secretary, uh, to the clerk, to Council Clerk Secretary to read those in.
Uh, through your worship, there are three comments, uh, slash questions submitted in the feed at the moment from Jane Marie Mitchell, and they read as follows. Uh, just wondering with our intensification goals, if new developments should include more intensive housing with some multi-dwelling housing as well as single detached homes. I was thinking of an apartment building as intensive dwelling units. And the last question is, are any of the units going to be for affordable housing?
Mr. Whitman, uh, I think the third one is one that you can answer. I think the first two were contemplative for council to consider as we look at these types of developments.
Yeah, for sure.
On the apartment building, uh, whether that was reviewed or not.
Um, apartments, I don't believe were reviewed by, uh, by our developer. They primarily do, uh, more ground related housing than apartment, but, um, if there is an interest in having apartments brought to the site, that's something we could discuss further.
Councilor Clifford, I see your hand.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I was just wanted clarification. The homeowner, he talked about the sewage outlet coming out like on a loan. Is that correct? Because I didn't believe we had the, the pipe in alone. I happen to have a home on a loan, so I'm curious about that.
Yes. Mr. Crinklaugh, go ahead as.
Um, currently the sanctuary servicing is, uh, still, uh, I guess, south of Huron Street. So that's a long way to go before it can reach this development.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other questions from members of council now for staff or the applicant? All right, seeing none, we'll invite Mr. Whitman to make any closing comments on behalf of the applicant.
Uh, nothing more to add. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Whitman. City council intends to consider this application at a future planning and heritage committee meeting. Where council members will have an opportunity for full discussion of the application after reviewing comments received from the public at this time. If anyone would like to receive further notice of this application, please email clerks@stratford.ca. A video of this meeting will be posted to the city's website and this public meeting is adjourned. And we will reconvene in council and I'll turn it back to the clerk. Mr. Bantuck.
Through your worship, uh, returning to item four, uh, there is a motion, uh, that the correspondence stated January twenty first, twenty twenty two received from Mr. Anad, uh, Srevastava and Mr. Mark Meccary and Brian Anderson, owner Athlone Farms regarding draft plan of subdivision thirty one T twenty one dash zero zero three and zoning bylaw amendment application Z thirteen dash twenty one, we receive for information.
Ritzman and Councilor Clifford moving in seconding. All those in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried.
Through your worship, item number five is reading of the bylaws, and there are two bylaws listed. Five point one being the letter of agreement for dedicated gas tax funds for public transportation program twenty twenty one dash twenty twenty two. And five point two being the confirmatory bylaw, uh, both of which can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote, council president.
Thank you. Move by Councilor Bunting and second by Councilor Henderson, two bylaws be taken collectively on unanimous approval. All those in favor? Opposed if any, that's carried. So we'll go to first and second reading. Move by Councilor Azalakos and Councilor Ingram seconding for first and second reading of bylaws five one and five two. All those in favor? Opposed if any, that's carried. Third and final reading. Move by Councilor Gaffney and Councilor Burbak for bylaws five one and five two, a third and final time to be read. All those in favor? Opposed if any, that's carried. A motion to adjourn this evening's proceedings. By Councilor Azalakos and Councilor BD, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed if any, and that's carried. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.